Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
And we have McDermott and Pinkleton absent. I think he's coming in.
Oh, he just walked in. Please read the opening meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in a prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Thank you.
I'll start. This is National Board Appreciation Month. First off, we'd like to thank the board for your service. In Oklahoma, it's not a job you get paid for at all. It takes a lot of time, a lot of dedication, and a lot of heartache. So, for your service to our students, parents, community, thank you. We've got some refreshments. We'll take just a minute. We can all have a piece of cake and some punch and everything, then get going to the meeting. Sound good?
Okay, great. So, we'll take a pause. We're here as well as the regular crew, so thank you for being here. Consent agenda, all the following items which concern reports.
I'm sorry. We need to move.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, we need to move item 5.1. That's the audit.
Oh, okay.
So you can get back to work and get home.
As I welcome Judge, he just ran right over you there. I'm sorry. 5.1 is going to be moved after now. Correct? You call in the right one. 5.1, okay.
There should have been an issue here. That one just gives you a look at, in that from one year to the next, it's just a snapshot. I didn't see anything that would concern me in any way, shape, or form from one year to the next. So, give a chance, and take a look at that. We'll start on page four of the audit itself. This is the first of three opinion letters. The district reports the financial statements on a regulatory basis, which is required by the state of Oklahoma. The district uses a modified cash basis of accounting. Revenues are recorded when the funds are received, and expenses are recorded when they're incurred or approved by the board. The opinion for the state of Oklahoma is an unqualified opinion. This is what you want. The opinion for the federal government is an adverse opinion due to the financial statements are not presented using the United States generally accepted accounting principles. The financial statements are not presented on an accrual basis of accounting. That means we record revenues when awarded and expenditures when they're incurred. Qualified because we do not show fixed assets. For our fixed assets, our capital expenditures, we expense them when we purchase them. We use them up, wear them out, we send them away, and get some more. You don't do tax returns, so you don't have to do depreciation. Exhibit A, which is on page seven. This is basically your balance sheet for each fund. Schedule A, balance sheet for your, for the special revenue that will be broken into building fund and child nutrition, and those are in Schedule A1, which is after the footnotes. I don't know why they do that, but that's the way they do it. Also, on the schedule sheet, you'll see out there the trust and agency. That is your activity fund. So, for your total fund balances, on your general fund, $5.9 million. Your special, which again was the building and the child nutrition put together, $4.1. Debt service, $13,000. No capital projects, which is very unusual. You're one of the only ones that I do that does not have any of that. Congratulations. Your fiduciary fund, $3.72. And then the final total is just a memorandum. Exhibit B, which is on page eight. Basically, this is your income statement. This is where all your revenue collected comes from, and then where all your expenditures go, and then a reconciliation between prior year and the ending. Schedule Exhibit C, which is on page nine. This is your actual versus what, your final budget versus original budget. And then versus what you actually did. Then we'll move over to page 10 through 17. These are your footnotes. A lot of good information on there. If you haven't read them, you should. Basically tells you how your school functions, what you do, how you do it. Make sure to mark your place, because you will fall asleep. It's very boring. Good information there. Again, usually on page 14, there is long-term debt, and you don't have any. So, let's look at that. What is the page 17? Has your, about halfway down, if I remember right. Right in the middle of page, total contributions to employees of the Alva District, number one. This is your retirement that you put in for each year. Just over $1 million for '24, almost $1 million for '23, and right at $1 million for '22. Though the state is ultimately liable for that, they will not put that on their balance sheet, so we have to put it here. Then we'll move on to the next page. There's the Schedule A1 we talked about, and A2, 18 and 19. There's B1 on page 20. C1, which is where we're going to land, and D, which is on page 22. And 23. This is your activity fund. This is the highest risk due to its mainly cash received. The board approves the fundraisers and how the funds are be expended or used for each activity. Sponsor must receive the funds, turn them to the custodian on a daily basis, request a PO before ordering goods or services, receive and sign the itemized invoice. And just about the time we get everybody trained on how to do that, the parties change and we get to starting again. So, we beat that up pretty hard. We look at that one very close. And we pushed pretty hard on Terry and her office to be the gatekeeper on that. And so, if you get complaints from people that they're being mean and stomping the foot at them, that's because of us. So, I told Terry and them, just blame it on me. We're going to move over to page 25 is the next one. This is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards elicited by each program. Total revenue was $1,327,331.72. Your total expenditures for persons was $1,264,248.27. Anytime you're over $750,000, you will be uniformed. You are uniformed this year. Which brings us to the second opinion letter. It should be on page 26. This is where we examine your payroll, your teacher's retirement, your board minutes, your leases, your bids, your POs, and your expenditures. And then the third and final opinion letter. It's on page 28. This is opinion on the compliance of each major program and on the internal control, uniform guidance examination of the federal programs. We call it CEVA, Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And then the page that everybody wanted to know from the very first is on page 30 at the bottom. No financial statement findings? None. Major federal award programs findings? None. And all of the ones that were in the prior year have been taken care of. The one from the prior year. I know I went fast. It's boring. And like I said, you just want to know that you had an unqualified opinion for the state and that there weren't any findings.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come over. Glad the roads were decent, and you got here safely, and we're getting home safely. I'd also like to thank the school personnel as well as the central office personnel, because they are very diligent. And as an educator, it is, it's hard to get used to the PO system. And so, you have been through it, and you realize that you can get a requisition, but you're not doing anything until the PO has been cleared, and then they will get paid until we've had a board meeting. So, it's a process to learn. But thank you very much for your due diligence. It's hard, because when people need things, they need it now. And so, we tried very hard to take care of ours. But thank you to the central staff. We appreciate that with your office.
Well, Pat had already cut his people, or his clients down to the best of the best.
Oh, yes.
When Jay and I bought them from him, I already knew that.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you for saying that. Well, we're very blessed. We're very fortunate to have people that are, I would like to think, we're very fiscally responsible to the taxpayers and to our students and do what we can, when we can, and what we can. So, thank you very much for your time. Were there any questions?
Thank you.
For our sake. If you stay around, you might get a standing ovation. You never know. You want a cup of punch to go?
No.
No? No? Okay. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the audit report, please.
I motion that we approve the audit report.
Second?
Second.
Senator, the second?
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Down to the back of consent agenda. Okay. All the following items which consider reports and items of a routine may be normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. 3.1, additional items for the new business to the agenda. I'm going to run through all of these as we come back. 3.2 is minutes of December 2nd, 2024 regular meeting. 3.3, approval of finance report. 3.4, vote to approve purchase order coverances. 3.5 is approval of extra duty assignment schedule. 3.6, approval of activity fund. 3.7, approval of activity fund fundraisers. 3.8, approval of activity fund interaccount transfers. 3.9, approval of child nutrition for 3.10, approval of board policy and procedures. 3.11, declare the following items as surplus. So, we'll go back up to 3.1, additions of items to new business to the agenda. Don't have anything. Go over. Minutes of the December 2nd meeting. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay. 3.3, approval of finance report, sir.
Okay, start with investments. Go through this a little bit. We've got four funds where we have money invested. Fund 11 is general fund. 21 is our building fund. Those are the two funds that we work out most to pay bills and all the things. 22 is our child nutrition fund for the cafeteria. 41 is our sinking fund. A little bit of money there. That's if we had a bond issue. That's where the money flowed through is Fund 41. And then Fund 81, so I guess we have five, is our gift fund. So, and Fund 11 invested. We've got $4,396,000 invested in the general fund. Those are invested between Bank Central and Alva State. Each account has a little bit different interest that it accrues, but it averages 5.15% between.
5.15?
Between four or five accounts. So, it's drawn a little more than 5% interest. That's 4.3 million. In the building fund, there's $2.969 million. It's invested between all three banks and talents, Bank Central, Alva State, and Community Bank, and it's averaging 5.02%. Fund 22, our child nutrition fund, there's $190,000 there. Again, Bank Central, Alva State, Community Bank, and that fund's averaging 4.98%. Our sinking fund only has $11,000 left in it. It's invested between Bank Central, Alva State, and Community at 4.98% as well. And then Fund 81 is our gift fund. We had a $250,000 donation a couple years ago to help reduce some entrances and different things, like at Washington, Washington School. That is invested between Bank Central and Alva State. It's earning an average of 5.1%. It's $260,000, and 250 of it is that one, that one donation. So, that's where our investments are at. Talk a little bit about revenue. In our general fund, so zoom in down here at the bottom. In our general fund, as of the end of December, we have collected $13,374,102.87 for the year. For the month of December, we collected $4,342,598.69. That is 1.238 million more than what we collect in December of '23. And that's good.
Yeah, I would say so.
That means people's, the majority of that is going to be in abhorrent collections. December's where you start paying those property taxes. We'd normally see a big jump in January. We had a jump. Just tell those people are paying their taxes a little earlier this year. When the dust settles this spring, we'll kind of know if our collections are actually up or not. But, you know, it's good to have that jump right now. That is mirrored in the building fund, not near as big in numbers. Yeah, because when you talk about abhorrent, just kind of round numbers, the general fund gets 35 mils, and the building fund gets five. So, just take, you know, whatever that percentage is. As of the end of December, we collected $4,436,216 for the year in the building fund. In December, we collected $478,912. That was $149,989 more than December of '23, which just mirrors the same reasons. When we look at our expenditures totals, in the general fund, we've encumbered $96,442, less than what we had this time last year. We paid out $179,777 less than what we had this time last year. That's in the general fund. In the building fund, we've encumbered $412,412 more than we did, and then have paid out $390.49 more than we did last year. The reason we paid out more in that building fund is we opted to purchase the buses. So, instead of having 130-ish thousand lease, we spent closer to half a million purchasing the buses. Down the road, it paid off. We also purchased the activity bus at the very beginning of the year instead of stretching out over a three or four-year lease agreement. So, between those two big purchases, that all came out of the building fund. That's why we spent more. So, all told, put the two funds together, we paid $210,412 more than we had this time last year, again, because of the buses. So, take the buses out, and it looks like we're doing pretty good, or maybe even a little more efficient. Move on. I'm going to move on to 3.4. That's the purchase orders.
Yes, sir.
We didn't have a lot of purchase orders for December. We were only in school about half the amount of times. It doesn't make sense. Just draw your attention to a couple of them. Number 292, it's covered athletics. That was for the varsity boys and girls basketball uniforms. That was the $8,400 expense. Number 298 is to Jostens for the 2025 diplomas and covers, our senior class this year. Number 297 goes to the Junior Library Guild for library books at the middle school. And number 301 is CDWG for direct print licenses on some of our network, to network all the printers and all that kind of stuff. So, those are kind of the big ones that are outside of the normal. Out of the building fund. Out of the building fund, just a couple. There's a $3,900, $3,925 PO to Alfalfa Electric Cooperative. That was for a heater repair. Did they replace it?
It was, it wasn't the whole unit, but it was one of the gas pipes had a leak.
So, $3,900 repair to a heater at Lincoln. And then PO number 75 was for almost $7,069.90 to A to Z Theatrical Supply. That was to repair some of the spotlights in auditorium on the stage. So, those were the big ones. The others are, I mean, just normal. Heater repairs seem to be the big thing this time of year. Did want to draw your attention to one, there's only one, in the child nutrition fund. It is to Heartland Auto Core. For $8,000. That's what we approved last month, that contract. They do, they installed the new dishwasher at Lincoln, and then have been around servicing the other four, getting everything back up. They stayed really in pretty good shape last time I talked to them. That's the financial report. If there may be questions or anything, I just.
3.5 is approval of the extra duty assignment schedule.
We only have one change on the extra duty assignment schedule. Stephanie Nichols at the middle school agreed to do all the concession stands for basketball. She was doing the middle school. She took on the high school as well. So, I think the high school pays $2,000, middle school paid $1,000. So, it'd be $3,000 total for those. That's the only change on the extra duty schedule.
Moving on to 3.6, approval of activity fund report.
Then the activity fund, again, you know, with the short months behind December, there wasn't a whole lot. The majority of the deposits, we didn't have any big fundraisers or anything going. Majority of the deposits was for the activity fund. Came from basketball concessions and gate. We did have a tournament in there. So, that would have been deposited in the activity fund. Other than that, there wouldn't have been a lot of ins and outs. It seems to be staying pretty healthy.
Approval of activity fund fundraisers, are there any?
I don't have any fundraisers. Don't have any interaccount transfers.
On to 3.9, approval of child nutrition report.
I'm watching this pretty close, just because we have that RFP due.
Yes.
It renews this spring with Keystone. You see, we worked to last time. So, we'll have to put that out for bid again and all the things. Again, we're about half the number of days served in December we did in November, maybe just a little more than that. But we served in December, we served 7,462 lunches and 3,115 breakfasts. That total. So, we saw a significant portion of our kids eating in the cafeteria. So... Anyway, that's child nutrition.
3.10 is approval of board policy and procedures. Do we have any votes in here?
I don't have any. And I don't have any surplus.
Okay, no surplus. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Rasheers. I would entertain a vote to approve consent agenda as presented.
Move the vote consent agenda items 3.1 to 3.11.
Have a second?
Second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
We'll move on, Mr. Rasheers, administration report. And we have principal's reports this evening. So, we won't do that.
I'm going to start. Okay, not a lot to report on Washington. But we did have our numbers go up by one. We got a new student, so our enrollment is up to 233. We received the OETT grant, as you already know. I did not bring any demonstrations this time. But we did have a training today. We had a wonderful training this morning with a motivational speaker with all of the staff. But then Washington went back to Washington, and we had a representative from the K-20 Center, and he did our afternoon talking about our vision for our grant, not necessarily using the pieces, but what was our vision. So, I wanted to read that to you so that you know what our vision is for technology at Washington. Washington's vision for technology is, through authentic learning opportunities with technology, our early learners will use problem-solving creativity and critical thinking skills as they begin to develop digital citizenship. So, that is what we're focusing on. And I'm looking forward to continuing to implement everything, as are the teachers. In February, we have a visit from the grant evaluation team. So, they'll, February. So, they just basically walk through the building and see what we're implementing, what progress we've made, how did we spend the money, what problems did we come across, how do we solve those problems, et cetera. So, that will be fun. And then we finish our map testing, which is our benchmark testing, in December. And that will be a big topic for our teacher PLCs. They'll talk about students that grew and students that didn't grow. What students are high achievers but had low growth, and what students were low achievers but had high growth, in those conversations. And then I also wanted to give a shout-out to my teachers, because this year, we kind of started out on a journey of phonemic awareness. And so, we bought a new program called Hegarty Phonemic Awareness. And each teacher spends about 10 minutes a day doing this little program with our students with each class, as well as our title teachers. So, anyway, it's been really wonderful so far, and they've all used it with fidelity. So, I'm very proud of them. I really can't wait to see how it affects our students as they learn to read and move on to phonics. So, that's all for Washington.
Thank you very much.
Yes, of course. I won't do my sangha dance since I definitely have to show up for presentation today. We are down, Longville is actually down two, and we'll be down two more. We had a couple great kids and families move out of our district. So, I'm sure it affected other schools as well. We're sad, but that is how it works. So, we are at 155, second grade at 90, third grade at 65. And like I said, the second grade and third grade will both go down one in my next report unless we have kids counteract that coming in. We had our third grade music program in December, a Pirate's Christmas. If you got to come, it was a really cute program. And we had that on the 10th. One of the things that has been pretty cool is they have been, Mr. Bratt has recorded them. So, I've been able to send out a link for both the second grade. for both the second grade in November and the third grade program to parents through our App to G app. After we had it, I sent it to all third grade parents, so that they can watch it, send it to grandparents or whatnot. So that's kind of a neat thing, and a fun way to use the app, that everyone can enjoy. Our second grade had an addition party on the 13th, and that just consists of, students take a one-minute test for their math facts, starting with plus zeros, and they go all the way up to plus tens. And if they get all of them, they get to do a hot chocolate bar. They start with, I think at, you start with your cup, so plus zero, if you only got plus zeros, you get a cup. That's not too exciting, but once you get a plus four, you get the hot chocolate, and then you get all the toppings, and I'm pretty positive everyone got at least their hot chocolate, so that was a fun way to help kids be motivated to show their math facts. Um, and on the 18th, second grade did a Christmas craft day, and third grade did a Christmas around the world day. And that's where they just went to every classroom, second grade rotated within second grade, third grade rotated within third grade. And each classroom had a different activity, that the teacher stayed and the kids rotated to them. So they got to experience, uh, going to every classroom and learning something new from those teachers, and I think they all seemed to really enjoy it. Uh, we had our Rialto, or AR Rialto movie day on the 19th. Every student got to go to the movies, and then if they received their AR goal, they got to have popcorn and pop along with the movie. Something that I thought I'd share that we did, I had never done this before, maybe everyone else has. Um, of course, I didn't get my permission slip sent early enough, so I panicked that it wasn't going, just so they knew they were going to see a movie. And I panicked a little bit that it might, and I was gonna send a backpack, so I also put a QR code on it where they can take the paper and they can do it into a Google form. I was very surprised that we had 78 of our parents use the QR code. So, I thought, wow, this is a great way to maybe use that, and so, you know, filters right into a spreadsheet, and I know who we have, I could highlight it, send to teachers, these are the ones we have left to go. Use the app for the handful that didn't come through paper or through the, um, QR code, and it, it worked out really well. I definitely will be using that again in the future. I thought it was a great, uh, happy accident. We did our service project every year, a Longfellow just service project, I kind of talked a little bit about it, that we were getting ready to do it last time. Uh, we collected food, dry goods for the Alba Express project. And we told our students that they collected 100 or more items, they got to dunk me in a dunk tank. Well, they, I think day one, they almost surpassed that, so we decided we'd make it interesting. Every 100, we put some other teacher up to get dunked.
Share the wealth.
So we shared, they collected 418 items.
Oh my.
So Mrs. Katie Williams, uh, who is our librarian, uh, Mrs. Wittit and Mr. Gould will join me in the dunk tank when that date will be determined. It would be a little polar plunge, you know.
That's what I was gonna say, for some people, that's a way to keep off the new year.
Maybe I should do it.
No, I want you to stay healthy.
Fun fact, and this is just something that they're out here, so you kind of know how we're using our technology, the App to G app, that, you know, um, something that we've noticed in our school, and I'm probably sure this has been noticed in the other schools. Um, we've met with the App to G team quite a bit, we've asked them to send out, once a week on Tuesdays, they send out a negative account balance for your funds, the cafeteria funds, and we have seen that Wednesdays is a pretty high payday. And even though we were sending them paper home before on the same day, we had definitely, because April, our secretary, she's like, what day did those go out? I was like, Tuesday, she goes, yep, I can tell. Since Wednesdays, we do see a better, quicker return on pay. I don't know if everyone else is seeing that, but it's definitely, um, we are seeing that, having App to G send that out as a text message has really, um, helped get in heat, no, our funds in. That's kind of the big things we have, some things coming up, and I don't, um, for January, that's what we have in the calendar so far. The Longfellow night did change from January 21st, it will be February 4th because of a conflict. But we got some fun things to look forward to.
Thank you.
All right.
Song and dance.
Yes, yes, I gotta have some room here. All right, so our enrollment went up, I think, to, um, we got 157, 81 in fourth grade, and 76 in fifth grade. Uh, our fourth grade music program that we had to reschedule, um, was on December 6th. Ms. Klein did a great job with our students, um, and I think our parents really enjoyed that. So we were free of muddy shoes coming in the auditorium, so. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Let's see, we had early release day, and we began our book study as a staff on that day for emotional poverty, and it was really, um, exciting to see how engaged every single faculty member was in that, even, so we had lots of lots of our paras were just really involved, and so it was really exciting. Um, so we'll continue to do that throughout this semester. And then we celebrated our support staff on November 20th. Um, literacy night was another huge event for us, we had a great time with that, many of our parents and students came that evening, visited the book fair, purchased their students' ornaments they made for the Northwest Family Services, the Monday, all goes there. And to see some of the other art projects made by the students, and that kind of went along with a writing project, so. Our teachers and kids enjoy doing that. One of the fun things we had, um, we had Bain Elliott, Connor Blackwell, Sequin Gray's and Paisley Cannon, all worked with Mrs. Binningfield, and they created a stop-motion video. I don't know if we have time to show that, it's like, it's not very long, but it's really cool. And the kids absolutely loved it, of course, if you don't have access to it, so. It was just, it was a very short little video, but I think they said they took like 3,000 photos to create this little stop-motion video. And just the creativity of it, and that we're trying to blossom that, and Mrs. Binningfield, I think, got a whole bunch more people interested. Students, we showed it at our, um, our assembly the other day, and with the parents there, and the kids really liked that, so. Hopefully, Mrs. Binningfield's vision is to have a little film festival sometime this spring, where we have lots of little, uh, videos to show, so. We'll be looking forward to that. Mrs. Anderson did a great job with the Polar Express Day. It's just that she dresses up in, in the gear, as far as she's the, uh, conductor of the train, and then Mr. Keller. Uh, if you don't know Mr. Keller, you got to know him. Uh, he's a singing, dancing custodian with the biggest smile and the biggest wave and the friendliest attitude, and so he got dressed up in chef's hat and chef's coat, and was serving cookies and hot chocolate to the students, and they, she lines the hallway up in the library, or outside the library with chairs, and we get it all decked out, looking like a train, serve hot chocolate cookies, it was, it's a blast, and the kids love it, and so does Mrs. Anderson. Um, Mr. Gould also helped, and they kind of swapped, um, Santa, Mr. Keller and him swapped Santa and the chef, so that was fun. Our Lincoln leaders collected 90 toys for the Toys for Tots, as well as $300. So, um, we'd like to thank everyone who donated to that. And then, um, we had 127 students receive their AR points, and they went to Rialto to watch a movie and have a snack and drink there, so we appreciate our partnership with, that Jesse, you know, allows us to come do that, so. Just our community support is phenomenal. Coming up, we have January 15th, Lincoln will hold the class spelling bee, and then that winners from the class spelling bee will participate in the school spelling bee on January 22nd, and then the winner from that will participate in a, it's all virtual since COVID, but, uh, the regional spelling bee on February 11th. January 16th, fourth grade will go to Drummond for the academic team. And then the fifth grade music program will be held on January 31st at 2 o'clock in the high school auditorium. I do want to back up though, because we did our first attendance, we're glad you're here, as well as you have all your work completed. Party day, um, you got to see the very start of that, it was a little chaotic, but I, with our, with our funds that we received from our fundraiser, we purchased lots of big games, arts and crafts, and all kinds of things for the students, and we just set that up in the gym and in the cafeteria, so the kids could go play a big checkers game, a big yard pong game, we had all kinds of beads and fun crafts and arts and board games and cards in the cafeteria, and it was just a really fun day. So hopefully, that's gonna motivate our kids to make sure they have their work done, and to be at school, and we'll, we're gonna increase the times that we do that throughout this next half of the year, so.
Wow.
That's a Lincoln.
Okay, the middle school, we are down at least six students, but I believe that I got two more requests today, so that's kind of the pits, but we are picking up, um, one student for sure, it's just kind of up and down throughout the year. Um, the AMS hosted a Christmas food drive and door decorating contest, I kind of talked about that a little bit before, I threw a picture up there, um, I had the best judges in town come around. They, you know, elementary principals came around, and, yeah, it was, like, you know, I had a little rubric for them, and they went around and graded it, but, uh, Mrs. Hader's class did win. Um, they gathered the most food, and they won in the whole decoration process, and it's pretty neat. You can't really tell, but they actually did like a 3D bowl of spaghetti, um, for, you know, to represent L, so that was pretty cool. Um, so they were rewarded with a pizza party and Rialto drinks. And then, in the whole process of doing this, um, Longfellow also participated in a food drive in their building, and then brought the food to us. And, um, Mrs. Nichols coordinated a holiday meal distribution boxes, and we distributed to 52, uh, 52 boxes. And the cool thing about this, we tried to do something different also. Um, we sent, you know, an email out to all of the faculty and staff, and said, hey, would you like to make, you know, like a homemade dessert? And we had, you know, over 50 people respond, yes, we want to make something, they made it, we added it to that box and, and sent it home. So it was a great way, you know, for our teachers to get involved in doing that as well. So I'd like to thank everybody who did, you know, donate and, um, took some time to make those treats for everybody. We also sent kids to the, to the Rialto for receiving the AR, AR, you know, goal. Um, we didn't have quite as many people as Longfellow, kind of happens once they hit middle school, we did. Um, we require them to make it the first nine weeks and the second nine weeks, and the activities kind of build. And, um, so we had 55 students meet their goal, um, so we took them down there, they watched a perfect game, they got a drink and a, and a popcorn, and um, I'd like to thank Ms. Ongren for organizing all of that, and, um, you know, she puts on like the mother-daughter, or mother-son, father-daughter, daddy-daughter dance, um, and, you know, uses those funds to be able to, to help do fun things in the middle school. And then, um, you know, we've been working on ways to try to combat, um, our attendance. Um, attendance is a huge thing, you know, when we look at our report card, and one way that we were trying to incentivize this, and we decided that if you have, um, less than six absences, then we're going to let you, um, participate in the fun activities um, right before school is out, and if not, you're gonna take semester tests. So, there were some very happy kids and some very unhappy kids, um, but they did some great activities. Um, our teachers organized a bingo day, and so the very first activity they did, um, they, uh, they had prizes that they awarded to them, um, it was all, you know, pretty fun, friendly competition. We would like to thank Walmart, holders, Mrs. Whitley, Mrs. Nichols, Mrs. Woods, Mrs. Williams, and Mrs. Kirkpatrick, they all brought different prizes to give to the kids, um, the Cherokee Strip Museum donated the little bingo boards, you can just push to the side, those are pretty cool, and Adam Jordaned, Adam Jordan provided the bingo hopper. Uh, Mrs. Thomas and Mrs. Anderson were the eventful EMCs of the, of the afternoon, and there was lots of jokes and fun. Um, and then after they did that, they went down in this, our whole theme for the middle school is the Olympic theme, so every month they go down and they compete in Olympic Games to see which class, um, you know, could score the most points. So they did all kinds of games, um, like decorate the tree relay, they had sled race where they're pulling kids on blankets, it's always tons of fun. Um, and a lot of just other minute-to-win-it-style games. And then we ended the day with classroom activities, um, each teacher decided what they wanted to do in their classroom, they could be, you know, playing checkers, watching a movie, just all kinds of different things like that, a little bit of bongo, um, uh, just, and then we had, uh, Mrs. Nichols donated popcorn, and we gave popcorn to all of the kids, so it was very great, and I am so thankful for the staff and coming together and doing all that, and so, there you go.
Well, I want to start the high school report by, um, thanking Mr. Eckhart for all of his hard work. Um, I'm sure you all have been to the basketball games and have seen the videos that he put together. He did an outstanding job, Wesley Klein helped him take pictures, and Jenny was talking about the number of pictures that they had that Mrs. Binningfield sorted through. Um, Wesley was out there with a camera on a boom, upside down, taking some really cool shots, um, having the best time, and Mr. Eckhart then, uh, Sunday after that tournament, spent eight hours here, uh, editing all of those videos and choosing the video, the, the pictures to go into the video, and, uh, he just did a phenomenal job, so I want to start our report by just thanking him for all that he does. He does our live streaming, uh, and coordinates that with his kids, and that's a huge undertaking, and so we just, we really greatly appreciate all of his efforts. Um, he's restructured his classes to where they're now qualified for career tech funding, and so that's pretty amazing. Uh, so that's, uh, something that's been a huge bonus to his program, a little bit of funding for him, and, and it's been a great deal, so. Thank you to Mr. Eckhart for all that he has done for our school and that he continues to do. Uh, we had a choir concert at the Methodist Church, which was amazing. Um, you know, I'm a choir and band nerd, and to me, there is nothing like being in a church like the Methodist Church, having a choir uh, process and recess as they perform, and it was just a magical time. Uh, the band did a great job with their concert, uh, Ms. Ofen kind of intermixed the, the bands with the middle school and the high school, and that was really fun to watch as well, so. Um, our athletics department, you know, it's always busy over there. Basketball, uh, is in full force, uh, the tournament was amazing, you talked about the concessions. Um, it was a busy enough time that, uh, they had a hard time getting the money bag all the way to, you know, the, the offices to be able to sit and count and go through. And so that's a pretty exciting thing, when we have that many people coming through and spending money in the concessions, because then that just goes right back into the programs. And so that's pretty awesome. Lance Mathers, and I want to recognize him being chosen for the CTB Allstate team, or All-Star team. He's an amazing athlete, you know, he was chosen obviously for football, uh, because that's what we had finished up, but, you know, to me, uh, there's nothing more fun than watching him play basketball, because he is so excited about life. And so if you need a motivation, just go watch that kid play basketball. Um, so, primary portion of my report, I am going to yield my time, uh, to a fabulous student. Kayla Leeper has come, she has some wonderful things to share with Kayla's Kindness Project, so Kayla?
So, my name is Kayla Leeper, and I'm a sophomore at Alba High School, I'm 16 years old. And I have a kindness project called Kayla's Kindness Project. So that's whenever I go to hospitals and give care bags like these to the hospitals. So, I first started this project when I was about nine years old, and so I went up to my mom and I was like, mom, I want to do something. She was like, okay, we can go donate clothes, I was like, well, I want to do something bigger. She was like, okay, and so, we thought and thought, and I remember this memory of my grandpa going to Stevenson's Cancer Center and getting cancer treatment. And I just remember seeing everyone there, and they're like sad and not having the best day, so I'm like, what if we bring some care bags to them? My mom was like, that's such a great idea. And so, that night, we drove down to Oklahoma City, bought everything with our own money, and went to our hotel room and got about 300 bags ready in the hotel room. And we went to Stevenson's Cancer Center, and I got to hand-deliver the bags, which that was one of the feelings I can never imagine, seeing how sad they are, and then you walk up and their eyes, their eyes just light up, and they start crying, because they're like, I've had such a bad day, and I saw you, and you made it better, and gave you hugs, and so it was one of the best feelings. And then, after that, we went to Children's Hospital, Jimmy Everest, and got a whole and got a whole bunch of toys and gave that to the hospital. I cannot hand deliver because they're kids and that. So we did that a couple of years and then COVID hit. So we were not being like, we could not go to the hospitals there anymore. So I was like, well, I still want to keep this project going. And so I was like, what if I move it to my hometown? So we talked to Sharon Medical Center and I started bringing about twenty bags a month to the hospital. Still doing this to this day. But I also wanted to do some more. So I got some charging stations, about four around the hospital for nurses or for patients who have, like, their phones die, so they need a charger, for kids for their tablets. I also got two hundred TV, or not two hundred, twenty TVs for the rooms. Because the TVs in there are like really small, so it's hard to see. So I wanted to get a bigger TV for each one of the rooms. We also have these bears. And so they go on to the helicopter. So it can be for like patients with Alzheimer's. So they have some comfort or some little kids. So that also goes into each one of the bags. I also made my own coloring book. I'll hand this off to you. And these also go into each one of the bags. So throughout the years, I didn't think how much this has come from so little where I thought I was just going to do it one year. And then after that, I'm like, I want to do some more. So we cannot keep paying for this out of our own pocket. So we had to do some fundraisers. And so over the years, we've done fundraisers. But it's gotten, over the past years, we've not had the need for a fundraiser from all the donations, from my community, which is amazing. So that's kind of the backstory. I've had a few accomplishments. I was on Sun Up whenever I was, ooh, ten, in fifth grade. And so, yes, that was amazing. And then I was also on News Nine, which that was such a fun experience. What else? I was chosen to be, to go to Virginia and represent Oklahoma and talk to kids all around the state, about fifty kids, to win, have the chance to win a scholarship. I also won the Melvin and Jasmine Award, Kidnidded ship award, which that was such a great opportunity. I love that. This year, I'm going to go to South Dakota and I'm going to go give another speech for the National Youth Awareness. That was what I went to Virginia for. When I went there last year, I was so scared because I was flying all by myself. I was going to another state where I knew absolutely nobody. And then once I got there, I met new people. I've made lifelong friends. I still talk to this day. So I can't wait to go back to another state this time. But I also, a few months ago, I started working at the hospital as a nurse's aide. And I'm the youngest person to ever work on the floor and get paid. So I love it so much. And yes, I just love it. So thank you for letting me talk to you guys today.
What do you think, what do you think you want to do when you put, what do you want to do?
I want to go to Northwestern.
Good choice.
Nurse degree, something with nursing, medical field. I don't, I want to stay in Alva. But I want to go to bigger hospitals and get more experience to bring back to Alva. So maybe have a semester at different hospitals and learn some more and then come back. So.
Be very inspiring.
Thank you.
Kayla is very inspirational. She's a pretty cool kid. She's one of our FFA officers. I know that there was a project that they had together where Kayla wrote a grant. And with FFA, they were able to build a pergola at the hospital. Is that correct?
Yes. And so then, what else? We also, I got, for the Making Things Better for FFA, I got recognized at state convention for FFA. And then I was also recognized for the National FFA article. So.
So, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move over to do that, I want to tell you guys how much we appreciate what you do. It's, it's interesting. How many years have I done it for? Seven? I don't know. You're being here presenting inspires me. So thank you.
Super Tans Report. Before I get started, Kayla, I just want to thank you for what you do. We, I talked to these principals a lot about what the symbol of excellence is supposed to look like in Alva. And we have the symbol of excellence posted all over town. And you're in. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Facility Report. Not a lot's gone on. Again, short, right? Next Ted came in. We've talked a lot about the network upgrades and camera upgrades and all the things. They spent Christmas break, about two and a half weeks in this, mainly in the high school. They've just about rewired the high school. I mean, literally. Bo Wyatt and his crew with Wyatt Technical Services will be here next, tomorrow, actually, if Bo's coming tomorrow, to start pulling wire to the classrooms for the phone communication system installation. That's going to start tomorrow. Or Thursday. I mean, you know how that works. But new switches, new battery backups in all five buildings. And just a plethora of other network components have been installed. Like I said, over Christmas break. We're seeing, we were getting between thirty and fifty megabyte speeds in the high school on Wi-Fi. We're two fifty or three hundred now. So, and it's still bottlenecked on some, on some old routers with Pioneer and different things. When all this is done, we should be hardwired, we're about nine hundred meg. We should get over a gig.
Good.
By the time we're done. So we're starting to see the fruits of the labor. So all that's, all that got installed over Christmas break, like I said, Wyatt Technical Services will be here tomorrow to start that project. And then we've installed all the new cameras around the high school. There's now forty-four operational cameras. They, they repositioned them to get better coverage out of them. We still have four additional, just that we could put up on this building. We wanted to wait, see what, where the needs were. You know, where, where's a gap?
Right.
And we'll go play.
There may be one.
So, all, all total of about forty-eight cameras in this building. We get down here, we're going to start moving to the other, the other side. So again, by August, the goal is to have entire new security systems. Phones, communications, bells, cameras, district lighting. Okay. So that's what we're using the security government. So anyway, a lot of work happened, a lot of work you can't see, a lot of work happened over Christmas break. Transportation, just, you have the normal stuff, normal repairs and maintenance on vehicles. Fleet's running really well. Year to date, we've ran two hundred and twenty-two activity trips. We had twenty-nine trips in December. And we project fifty-four trips in January. Of course, you figure, well, next week, next week JV, JV boys, I think, are playing the Cherokee Tournament. And our boys and girls, both, will be at the Week Capital. So there's going to be a lot of buses up and down the road this next week along. Anyway, tons of stuff going on that way.
The renovations, the termists, the assignments, four point three.
Don't have any.
Four point four presentation and a dropout remediation reports.
I'm going to defer to Dr. Nicebarger for that.
So the remediation and dropout report, we're going to kind of look at from a little different perspective this, this year. And look at our ACT scores. And I'm standing here holding my computer because as with all of our technology, we've had some internet snappies today. And so printing was not on the list of things that could be, could be done. So I'm just going to kind of go from here. So I apologize. But the report, it looks at last year's graduating seniors. So that would be ACT year of twenty-two, twenty-three. And looking at our composite, the mean of our composite, it is an eighteen point three. State average, state mean is seventeen point eight for that year. And so it's a little higher than average. It's not, not exactly where we would like it to be. And it's, it's definitely something we are working on. Our math, our, the mean of our math scores was seventeen point five that year. Science eighteen point nine, English seventeen point six, and reading eighteen point six. So looking at that, that remediation, basically what we're looking at for our ACT, about half of our kids are at the, the level we would need them to be. And that's something that we're really working hard on. You know, when, when you start looking at math and reading scores and that kind of thing, it, you know, it's just, it's kind of an interesting animal. What we're looking at, what we're doing at the building level is looking at our standards. And how are we, how, what are we teaching compared to what ACT is actually testing? It's not teaching to the test. It's teaching what the powers that be say are important and that our kids should learn. And so if you start looking at those standards and looking at what they, they need to be learning, we're really having to kind of dig in and figure out where are our holes, what's missing? And ACT is not something that you start preparing for when they're freshmen. It's when they're babies. It's that hegarty reading and getting them to be, be good learners and, and good readers. Because a lot of these tests, even the math tests, a lot of it is reading. It's not necessarily just computation. So we have to, we have to look systemically at what are we going to do? How are we finding those holes? Is there a vertical alignment? So we're starting that in our building, looking at what are we teaching in math? Is it vertically aligned? What are we teaching in ELA? Is it vertically aligned? So it's, it's definitely something that we are really having to dig in and see, you know, that's an important lesson. I really enjoyed teaching it, but is that the lesson I should be teaching? Is that the standard that we really should be talking about right here? So those are really important discussions that we're, we're having right now. So then the second half of this report is basically looking at the dropout. And of that cohort, we had three students that are official dropouts. And all three of those students had life experiences that took them somewhere else. And we don't necessarily know that they continued. Until we get a records request, we don't know what happened to them. So, you know, you look at some of those kids, they move. Maybe the life experience that they have here, maybe their life situation changed. And because that is with these particular students, they ended up needing to, to be somewhere else. And it's all for different reasons. But all of them, you know, as we talk about it, we, we talk, Mrs. Ryder and I were talking about this, that, you know, we look at, years ago, we talk about college dropouts. Well, there were dropouts because of a pregnancy or because of a family member that got sick and they had to go to work. And they had to start taking care of the family. Well, these are the things that you're seeing at the high school level now. And it's not really, you know, we're not just looking at that concept of a college dropout. Now we're looking at the concept of a high school student who has to go to work or has had a, an, a child. And now they, they have a family that they need to start taking care of. So of those, those three students, you know, we, we don't have any idea whether they continued. When I was thinking about our report for next year, you know, we have students that are on our dropout report from last year. They had to leave last year, but they continued on this year. So they're on the dropout report for last year, but they, we picked them up again and they continue on. And so it's just a different world, a different animal, and a different approach to life. So we're really having to think about how we're teaching. We don't teach children anymore at this level. We have young adults. And we have to teach them as adult learners. Because their life experiences are, in a lot of instances, are different. And they need to be treated as adult learners. So it's kind of a brief report, but I just wanted to kind of go from that perspective as opposed to, you know, the, this number of kids. What they track in for college remediation is just Oklahoma kids. We don't know if they go out of state. We don't know if they had to have remediation or not. So to me, that's almost not even a relevant number. Because it doesn't really tell us as a whole what we have. But we know, we can look at our ACT scores. And we know that if they're scoring where they are, then we're going to need to, we're going to, we're going to have some remediation. You know, interest exams are, some are depending on the university, eighteen to twenty-two to take classes. And we're at that, just right there, at the eighteen point three for that, that, that class. And so we know they're going to need remediation. So if we know that, what are we doing differently to try to combat that? So kind of a broad approach to it. But to me, it's the approach that makes more sense. We can't change a lot at the college level, but we can change a lot while they're babies up through high school to be able to prepare them for, for their next stage of the game. So.
Any questions, any timeline on implementation?
Well, honestly, ongoing. I mean, you know, you, it's a, it's a non-stop, we're constantly, like today, we had our O E T T. And what we were talking about in our, our training was AI and how we can implement that to really enhance those lessons and make that. So I'm not sure you ever get to a point where it's like, this is, we're going to, unless it's a curriculum or something like that.
Well, I guess that's what I'm looking at. I was seeing when you give the side's composite score, the individual scores of the subtotals. Is the English department at the middle school and high, are they collaborating so we can see where we're having? I'm just asking. I mean, it's, it's an interesting dilemma because it is our problem. It's my problem too.
Absolutely.
I'm not pointing fingers.
Absolutely.
But I just think, what are we doing? And I mean, we can all look at it and, and I know, report cards, report cards. Whether the rest of you like to take them home. I sometimes didn't. But, but I deserve what I got. But, you know, it's like the statements that out and John Q. Public sees that. When you see that we've got a B or lower. Really. I mean, I started to say C, but B or lower. People are disappointed in us, us. And, you know, you think, well, and I know you can't be, put a Band-Aid on it. I know you can't fix it. I just, I'm just wondering, I mean, we're, how do you tackle that kind of a monster?
So one of the things that we've talked about is vertical alignment. And I mean, and that was the look, is like, okay, this is what I'm going to let out. But we've talked about that district-wide, we have to do some vertical alignment. If we are moving from second grade to third grade, third grade to fourth grade, how are we making sure there aren't any holes as they have those foundations and making, and it's not just the students with holes, but holes within the curriculum. So you look at the math, one of the things we've done, we adopted Oklahoma math, a big ideas, pre-K through twelve. So we have a curriculum for the entire district, thinking that maybe we have more of a comprehensive approach to teaching math. One of our teachers, I think it was in Allison's building, I may be wrong, but they did a paperclip walking through the textbook with the standards. And they looked at envision math, they looked at big ideas. And by doing that, they could see where the paperclips were, that's where the standards were. And the book with the most paperclips is the one that met the most standards, that addressed the most standards. And Big Ideas was the one that met that criteria for, for that, those teachers who are analyzing it, which was a great, to me, a great approach. Anytime you have one curriculum at the elementary level and then you go to something else at the junior high, and then you, excuse me, middle school, and then you get something else at high school, there's going to be built-in holes. There's going to be built-in holes just because maybe they didn't address that in second grade, they addressed that in third grade, or even in first grade, and so, you miss something. And that's why vertical alignment district-wide is a huge issue and something that we need to be looking at again.
And I think, I think it's just important because I think it's, I mean, this, it's a team effort.
It is.
And these are our kids.
It is.
And our community, and I know the community members, it's, it's as important for a kindergartner to go to school and have a good environment, a safe environment, a good educational opportunity, be at school, ready to learn as it is for a senior high school.
Yes.
And it's continuum, and you just, we just, it has to happen or we don't, we don't get our progress.
And these programs of, like Jenny was talking about, of incentives for attendance, those build the good habits at younger ages. And if you get those habits, I mean, we talk about COVID. One thing COVID did, it taught us you don't have to go to school and you can still learn. And I don't know that our attendance will ever recover from COVID because we just took that step back and it's like, well, I'm not going to step forward again. I just don't want to go. And there's not always a way to get them to come, but if you have these amazing incentives to maybe combat that at the little's age, then when they get to be older, they're going to have those habits instilled.
I'll let the cat out of the bag a little bit.
Sorry?
One of the challenges I've kind of got, principals and stuff, that I expect to be looking at down the road, the majority of that vertical alignment, because education builds, and we know that. You can't do algebra unless you know your zeros and fours and all the hot chocolate trail, right? But that, but the reality is, it takes that to do algebra, to do calculus. Education builds. You can't, you can't, if you don't learn your alphabet, you can't read. You can't read, you can't do science, all the things that come later. So, it's reasonable to say that the curriculum and instruction has to be vertically aligned. So, what do we need, if Oklahoma has set the ACT as the benchmark to graduate high school, and we did, because that's what it takes to get to college, right? So, if we set that as the benchmark, then what do these high school teachers, I was a math teacher, somebody who's math, that Algebra I, geometry-level math, what do they need to know to be successful in ACT? And that's what my pre-algebra teacher needs to teach. What is, what do they need to know to go into pre-algebra in seventh grade and then sixth grade, all the way down, right? It's vertically aligned. So, the thought is, and this is our job, the thought is, we provide the resources and some compensation, and teachers come in for a week or so over the summer, right? When we have time to sit down and do these things. Because our kids show up, they don't have time to do, let's be honest. Provide those, those extra resources to vertically align our curriculum, to do the things it's going to take to get the As on the report cards and academic achievement and academic growth. Those are the two big things that I, I see, that I, that I want to see improvement in. It's academic achievement and academic growth. There's been some conversation in the news about graduation paths and college or technical school, what, you know, and they sent, they sent out their inflammatory emotional things, right? Initially, but I think the concept's accurate. At some point, there has to be training, whether, whether the company trains them, or they go to technical school, or they go to college. Okay? They will be training beyond high school, and we need to prepare our students for that. That's the bottom line. So, those two areas in particular is where I want to see, see the growth. And our, our staff, our administration, us, we're going to do the things we need to do to invest in that, to push this into that next level. So, anyway.
Well, thank you for that. Okay. And once again, thank you for your enthusiasm because we're a team, and these are our kids. And so, thank you very much. All righty, let me look at where we are. We've had administrative report, did we get everything covered? Supertense report, resignations, annual dropout, okay. There's many, we're taking votes on any of that. Okay, thank you. Item five is items of current business. We took care of 5.1, so 5.2 is discussion of possible board action to vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant one and two, non-certified position for the remainder of the 24, 25 school year.
We had two paraprofessionals that, that have re-offered, Ley Manna, did I say that right? Ley Manna Jones and Hunter McMillan were offered positions for pre-paraprofessionals in the district. We've had a couple of leaves. I would recommend to hire them.
All right. Have a motion?
I have a motion that we approved the offer of employment for applicant one and applicant two.
Second?
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Thank you. 5.3 discussion, possible board action, vote to accept a $30,000 donation from Alva State Bank.
Alva State has donated $30,000 to help build a outdoor classroom in Washington and purchase new Ritzus for auditorium for our elementary students.
Wow.
We need to, I would recommend to accept the $30,000 donation.
Oh, come on, alive, isn't this in that motion?
I would accept the $30,000 donation from Alva State Bank.
Thank you.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, it's, and it's funny, and I know people get tired of you saying that. Lucky me. Thank you. Have that power shirt on these days. That's it. And we totally underwritten where my teacher personally. Yeah, there you go. And they, they set a very good standard, did they not? Their legacy lives. So, anyway, thank you. That's, that's wonderful. All right, number six is new business.
We don't have any.
All right, number seven is proposing executive session to conduct ongoing evaluation of the superintendent per 25 Oklahoma statute, section 307, B1. Have a motion to have a second session?
Motion. Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.